All right, let's call the order. The City of Milton Common Council meeting Tuesday, June 4th, 2024 at 6:01 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice? Meeting notice was posted at Milton Pigly Wiggly, Milton City Hall and Home Tony's Hardware. Approval of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Eric, go ahead. All right, mayoral proclamations. No, public comments. There are no public comments unless anybody came in and wants to make a public comment after we looked to see if there were public comments. No? Okay. And if an agenda item comes up and you'd like to make a public comment, just let us know. Go to the podium, first, last name and address, and we can take that public comment then. Okay, so we have several proclamations, and we actually are honored to have guests here to receive one of them. So that's always the best. So I'll read through the proclamations, and then I'll actually read the entire proclamation for the resolution recognizing June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth Day. So we have proclamations for LGBTQ Pride Month, Dairy Month, Great Outdoors Month, and Safety Month. And then we'll do approval of minutes for May 21st, 2024.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2024-08, Resolution Recognizing June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth Day. Whereas in 1619, a ship arrived in the British colony of Virginia bearing cargo of enslaved people from Africa, and whereas black people were bought and sold as slave labor for 250 years and suffered unspeakable acts of violence, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1st, 1863, freeing enslaved people in the South. However, many Southern enslavers ignored that order. On June 19th, 1865, two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was issued, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas to enforce the President's order, freeing enslaved people two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas other systems of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, mass incarceration, and anti-black violence throughout our country's history, and whereas Juneteenth is a day to reflect on both bondage and freedom, it is in equal measure a remembrance of enslavement and subjugation, as well as a celebration of the promise of a brighter morning to come. In continued efforts to build equitable communities, the City of Milton joins with YWCA Rock County and other institutions and individuals who are committed to eliminating racism and promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity to celebrate Juneteenth. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Milton Common Council on this fourth day of June 2024 hereby recognizing Wednesday, June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth Day and encourage residents, local businesses, educators, and community and faith-based organizations to celebrate diversity and advocate for the elimination of racism. And is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that resolution has passed, and I will present this to your representatives from the YWCA here. And do you have some information I can share about your Juneteenth celebration really quick?
It'll be at 12:00 on a Juneteenth celebration. So I'll send some information.
And everybody is welcome, and I've attended the Juneteenth celebration for several years, and it's just the best. So I would encourage everybody to attend, and as soon as I get more information, I'll send it out, and we can put it on our Facebook page, too. That's all day long. Thanks. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding Ordinance 2024-535, Amending Parking Restrictions for ATVs, UTVs in the City of Milton.
After reviewing area municipalities' current ordinances relating to the operation of ATVs and UTVs, it is my recommendation that parking restrictions follow the existing ordinance restrictions for motor vehicles. A specific recommendation, a new subsection under Ordinance 70-366 sub-I, would read Parking, ATVs, UTVs shall be subject to all parking requirements and allowances of motor vehicles included in the City of Milton Municipal Code, except that ATVs, UTVs shall not be parked overnight on any street, excuse me, any city street or city parking lot. Absent that language in the existing ordinance, ATVs and UTVs would be allowed to park on city terraces and create other parking issues, as the existing zoning ordinance in Ordinance 78-1173 does not adopt ATVs, UTVs into the language. For fiscal impact, there is none to the city. Recommended motion is the Approval of Ordinance Change Recommendation. Enactment of an ordinance requires a first, second, and third reading and motion to adopt. If the council prefers, the second and third reading may be waived at the same time the first reading is completed.
Any questions or comments from council?
I don't.
Go ahead.
What's the reasoning behind the additional parking restrictions for overnight as opposed to any other motor vehicle in the city?
Primarily due to the size of the vehicles. They don't have the reflective material that most vehicles have on them, or the, some may not have the required tail lamps, stop lamps. Also, it would, the goal is to eliminate the use of those to transport people downtown and leave those out on city streets, causing more issues in the event that they're more likely to become, in some other jurisdictions, we've had issues with property complaints if properties left behind are more open, more subject to theft from vehicles, somewhere like somebody with a Corvette or a Jeep that leased property open. We're trying to minimize that, keep them off the street in those out of time hours.
So if I'm understanding correctly, then, so we have overnight parking lots in our downtowns, and they could not use those?
That is correct with that part of it, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2024-535, approving the first reading, waiving the second, and third, and adopting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible, discussion and possible action on Ordinance 2024-536, Amending Section 70-360 and Creating and Amending Section 70-362, Regulating ATV/UTV Operation Within the City of Milton.
Upon providing an ordinance to the Department of Transportation as required by the ordinance, the DOT requested that we refer to highways and connected highways in the ordinance, specifically Highway 59 being a connected highway. This doesn't substantively change the ordinance at all, just taking care of some requests from the DOT. Again, any ordinance change requires a first, second, and third reading and a motion to adopt. If the council prefers, the second and third reading may be waived at the same time as the first reading is completed.
Questions or comments?
So is this just a language cleanup, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2024-536, approving the first reading, waiving the second, third, reading, and adopting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding pre-annexation agreement with Heath Farms Properties and SV Enterprises.
This pre-annexation agreement outlines when the city will subdivide the property that the developers look into annex into the city, certify what type of zoning that will be, and what the certified survey map will be acted, when the certified survey map will be acted on after annexation. In turn, the owner and developer will enter into a development agreement with the city. The agreement has been reviewed by the developer and the city attorney. There's no fiscal impact to the City of Milton related to this pre-annexation agreement. The city administration recommends approval of the proposed pre-annexation agreement with Heath Farms Properties LLC and SV Enterprises. And representative from the developers here, if you've got any questions.
Questions or comments?
I would move approval of the pre-annexation agreement with Heath Farms Property and SV Enterprises.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Ordinance 2024-537, Annexation Petition for Heath Farms Properties from the Town of Milton. Oh, oh. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial developers' agreement with Heath Farms Properties and SV Enterprises.
Again, Heath Farms Properties has made a request for annexation of five acres into the city. Heath Farms Property intends to sell those five acres to SV Enterprises. It's in the best interest of the city to have the development agreement with, for this commercial development, due to the desire to have orderly development for the property to the west of that site. The developers' agreement outlines the roles and responsibilities of the city and developer, sequencing of the project, providing access to the property to the west, and the developers' payment in lieu of parkland dedication. The developer fully intends to build a financial facility on the parcel. The agreement has, again, been reviewed by the developer and the city attorney. There's no fiscal impact to the City of Milton related to the subject's development agreement. Costs incurred by sending engineer, consultant, and city attorney will be invoiced to the developer. Additionally, the city will receive requisite parkland dedication fees that will be allocated to the Parks Fund. The city administration recommends approval of the proposed developers' agreement with Heath Farms LLC and SV Enterprises. And again, the developers here, if you've got any questions for them.
I'm move for approval of the proposed developers' agreement with Heath Farms and SV Enterprises.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Ordinance 2024-537, Annexation Petition for Heath Farms Properties from the Town of Milton.
Upon annexation, this parcel will be its own B2 large-scale commercial district. After annexation is effective, the property shall be exempt from further taxation in the Town of Milton, and henceforth be subject to taxation and assessments as part of the City of Milton. Pursuant to Section 66.0217 sub-14 sub-A Wisconsin statutes, the City of Milton agrees to pay annually to the Town of Milton for five years an equal amount of the amount of property taxes levied by the Town of Milton on the annexed territory as shown in the tax rolls in the year in which the final annexation. This will result in a total amount of $30.66 being paid for the City of Milton, to the Town of Milton, for the parcel for the entire five-year period. The Town of Milton has filed no objections to this annexation. City of Milton Administration recommends Common Council approve Ordinance 2024-536, annexing the land into the City of Milton. And once again, enactment of an ordinance requires first, second, and third reading and a motion to adopt. If the council prefers, the second and third reading may be waived at the same time the first reading is completed. And attached there's the annexation review and map for Heath Farms Properties LLC.
It's five, is it five, ordinance 537?
537, I apologize.
Okay, questions, comments, motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2024-537, annexing the land into the City of Milton, enacting the first reading, waiving the second and third reading, and motion to adopt.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2024-09, Creating City of Milton Ward 12.
Now that we've annexed the property into the city, it is prudent to set up a new voting ward. And currently, the said parcel contains five acres and a population of zero. So a new warding, voting ward is recommended.
For the zero?
For the zero.
And I would, I would point out that this will be in Mary Milleney's Rock County Supervisory District.
Perfect. Is there a motion?
Just curious, what's the reason for needing to create a ward if there's nobody there?
Because, well, legally are required to require, create a ward, since this is actually not in the district that the rest of the city is in. That's why I need this.
And, and we couldn't, we couldn't attach it to the other one because it's not co-terminus.
Okay, I was just curious.
Co-terminus, big words.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-09.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Right, that motion carries. Congratulations on to Milton Ward 7, 12, Milton Ward 12. Someone's on my mind. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding US Cellular antenna modification on the West Water Tower construction.
US Cellular is proposing to modify their antennas on the West Tower. The work has been reviewed by KLM Engineering, who performs the tower engineering for the City of Milton. The plans are also reviewed by Plan Commission tonight, who recommended approval of, by the Common Council. Therefore, the city administration recommends the Common Council approve the antenna upgrades proposed by US Cellular on the elevated storage tank located at South Clearlake Avenue.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the antenna upgrades proposed by US Cellular on the elevated storage tank located on South Clearlake Avenue.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman for Construction Engineering Services for improvements to Wells 4, 5, and 6.
As part of the borrowing and capital improvement planning that was performed last year, works, work at Wells 4, 5, and 6 was proposed. Designing the work was performed by Baxter and Woodman. Project was bid out, and on the next item here, we will see the bids for review. This item, though, is for the construction-related engineering services for Baxter and Woodman's time to perform those services related to the construction, contract administration, and other items with the well projects through completion. The fees for service are based on the engineer's, engineer standard hourly billing rates for actual work time performed, plus reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses, and are funded by the account related to the work performed, which in this case is the water utility. The total amount is the not-to-exceed fee of $73,950. City administration recommends approving the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for wellhouse improvements, construction-related services.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for wellhouse improvements, construction-related services.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the wellhouse improvement project bids.
This item is the bids for the project. They were, the bids were received on May 16th. There were two bidders for the project. Gilbank Construction was the low bid with an amount of $1,260,420. That, again, is for work related to the three wellhouse facilities. It's a little higher than the pre-bid opinion of cost, but there was some additional work discovered through the design process that was necessary. The recommenda, recommendation from Baxter and Woodman is to award the contract to Gilbank Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,260,420.
Any questions or comments?
I would move we approve the contract with Gilbank for wellhouse improvements. Do you want the amount?
You can. We'd have to modify it by change orders.
In the amount of $1,260,420.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman for industrial users survey.
This is work related to determining what industrial users discharge to our wastewater treatment facility, and what, if any, permitting locally we need to do to protect our facility and our operations. This project will gather information on those industries, and then will be used to determine what, what the industries do, and then determine what the wasteful allocations would be for each industry. Again, the fees are based on engineer standard hourly billing rates, and the total not-to-exceed fee is $20,000. Staff recommends approving the work order for industrial users survey engineering services.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the work order for industrial users survey engineering services.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a request for authorization to apply for the Flexible Facilities Program grant for the Milton Public Library.
Yeah, so through the state of Wisconsin, through their Flexible Facilities Program, the library, the state has some grant funding available for local governments for the purpose of enabling work education and health monitoring in public libraries and community centers. Back in 2016, when we remodeled our library, we unfortunately were unable to do our lower, lower level, because due to lack of funding. Right now, we currently share the lower level with the Prairie Lakes Library System and their offices, and they're actually looking to kind of reduce their space. They're looking at their space needs. So this gives us the opportunity to expand our needs for the library. I have shared in the past that our, how are, how often our rooms are used, our study rooms and meeting rooms. We, and we are lacking a large programming space that can comfortably fit more than 60 people. So that's one thing that we're lacking. So the timing of this grant, and with Prairie Lakes looking to reduce their space needs, it's a perfect time for us to apply for this grant, and potentially remodel the lower level for that large programming space, for more meeting rooms, more office spaces, more space for individuals to use for health monitoring, private health monitoring purposes, remote work purposes, and for us to provide more programming. So the grant is due on July 11th. The City of Milton does have to apply on behalf of the library, and then award, grants will be awarded in October. This is, the timing of it is perfect, what we need. Any questions?
Is there a motion?
I move that we support the Milton Public Library and help them apply for the Flexible Facilities Program grant, and that the city put that grant forward, please.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Apply away. Discussion and possible action regarding Ordinance 2024-538, Amendment of Division 2 Speed Within the City of Milton.
Upon review of the speed ordinance, we've discovered there's several errors or omissions, or things that just need to be changed based on the length of time since the last review. In particular, and in summary, there's a memo attached that was prepared by Baxter and Woodman. Chief Saxi and I, as well as Paul, Paul from Public Works, did some physical onsite examinations to determine what speed limits are onsite and compared that with the ordinance. Reasons for some of the changes are streets that have been vacated, language that existed before the creation of the State Highway 59 relocation and the 26 bypass, additional residential subdivision development in areas where speeds have not been changed or the posted speeds are different than what was included in the ordinance. With all that being said, the city administration recommends approval of the ordinance. Again, it's an ordinance, so it would require adoption with approval of the first reading waiving the second and third if the council so desires.
Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-538, approve the first reading, waiving the second, and third reading, and adopting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. General items, committee reports. Who wants to go first? Hey, staff reports. Mark.
Really, the only big update, we had the bad weather on Sunday evening there before Memorial Day. Did cause some damage at our Public Works facility. Staff was in for several hours that evening, just trying to secure the building. We had 12 large overhead doors that were either totally removed or damaged that they'll need to be replaced, in addition to a window on the file room and some siding and damage to the building exterior.
Kelsey, thank you, Mark. No update. Chief?
There is no update from the Police Department this week.
They're just tempting fate here. Ashley?
I'll share, our summer reading program officially starts on Monday. We have snakes coming on Thursday, and lots of fun stuff. And we received $750 from Girl Scout troop 7452 last night. So that was very nice of them.
Nice, Jenny?
Just have a quick update. We are officially in election season again, so June 27th is the deadline for clerks to send out the absentee ballots for the August election. So that is the deadline. Most likely, we'll have them out probably a few days before. So we're starting our, our next season.
Paul?
First, I want to commend the Public Works and the Police Department for their response to our tornado that hit the other week. Just an exceptional teamwork from both departments, and just great seeing what our staff can do when they come together and take care of our community here. So that's just really good to see. Second, I've been working on lots of developments and working with a couple of companies in the business park on expanding the rail line, and that's been moving forward. Some hitches, but we're, seem to have a good plan going forward, so that's exciting.
Yes, and I just want to echo Paul's comments. I don't know, I don't remember there being an incident command needing to be created since I've been mayor. And I was able to, you know, check in with that incident command and see everybody there. Our staff was there, Police Department, Public Works, Rock County Emergency Management, Rock County Public Works, and the Sheriff's Office, and it just really ran smoothly. So I don't think we're ever gonna not have another extensive weather incident like that, but just so the public
extensive weather incident like that, but just so the public knows and you all know that it worked well. And that's what I've heard from everyone and I haven't heard any complaints and, you know, what happens that night is really important, but also what happens the days following an event like this is really important, how our community takes care of each other. I saw Public Works still out doing wood tipping and taking brush and stuff off of new people's lawns and, you know, we just had another incident where we had severe weather and a tree fell and damaged someone's property, a rather large tree. So we'll continue to have interesting weather and we'll continue to be committed to taking care of our city and our community, so thank you for that. And, um, are you ready for team building? Okay, okay, so it took me a while to find this because I had saved it for a while. I've been saving things for you guys to think about. Okay. Here we go, and this will be super easy. It'll be super easy. You suddenly find yourself on stage for your own TED Talk with no prior planning. My entire life is like this. What topic can you discuss for eighteen minutes? Go.
Taylor Swift.
I love it, I love it, I love it. I'll go. I can talk about the history of team building in the city of Milton.
Industry four point oh.
Say it again, not your.
Sorry, industry four point oh, this fourth revolution of the industrial movement, data collection, data science.
And Eric will volunteer to give a presentation to all of city council on that.
I can, eighteen minutes following council.
Okay.
How to prepare a decent tasting meal using only the incontinence of an M R E.
You can't stretch that out for eighteen minutes.
Yes.
A lot of ums, ahs, and deep breaths. Yes, yes, I do, in fact, unfortunately know that.
That's funny you say that because I cracked a can of Hickory smoke today at work and it's actually remarkably good.
I just want you to know that that is a marine thing because there happens to be Spam in somebody who shall be unnamed right now's refrigerator. Testify to that. I can't prefer to deny it, they're relative.
Pieces of heaven, so I don't know which tone, just marine. Yeah, those are awesome.
Know how we provide these really cool meals for you sometime? You know the next one's Spam, right? It's Spam.
And the lifetime supply of sodium.
Since it's baseball season, I go with pitching mechanics.
Could probably bore you for eighteen minutes of like balancing a trackbook or building a budget or something, so.
I love it. With slides, or no, you can't do slides on TED Talks.
I could do that on the music from the seventies. Do you want singing?
What genre? Funk, country, what?
Funk, rock and roll, little country. We go everywhere, a little bit country, a little bit rock and roll.
Saturday Night Fever disco.
I, I would say elections would be the obvious answer, but I'm gonna go ahead and say George Strait.
You have so much music here, I just love it.
Since it's fresh in my mind, I'll just do the Rock County Affordable Housing.
Think the easy answer would be Civil War, you know, related history, but I'm instead gonna go with installing tall offable panels between thirty and sixty feet dial, tall.
Sewer televising.
Sewer televising?
Sewer televising.
Oh, we love you for that. We love that.
What would the title of your talk be?
Teaching organizational skills.
I'm just gonna say, this is funny, we're doing this because I just downloaded the TED Talk app today because I just watched a TED Talk this morning. I would say the importance of coffee house culture and its effect on community.
Because coffee houses are now known as third places still. So, no, Mark and our guests are always welcome to participate.
Well, you all are way too deep for me, but, so I'll just say easily fishing.
I'm not surprised. So we have so much entertainment we can tap into. Instead of doing all team building, we can just assign fifteen-minute talks, eighteen-minute talks, and our guests. If you would like to join us. Good partnership, there we go. Oh, thank you. We love you. Yeah, sorry, that's how, you can't come back if you win the first time, no.
I think that the next team building exercise should have something to do with a snake from the library.
I think we should, I have always said we should have any kind of animal anybody wants to bring to work, like.
Just saying.
Yes, dogs, cats. I, yes, that has been my unofficial policy forever, that people could have dogs and kids at work, I mean. Yes.
Cats too.
Cats, dogs.
Snakes.
Snakes.
Mice.
We have mice. We coexist with mice. Yeah, we need food for the snake. Our next meeting date is June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Good job, you guys. It was a long agenda and we moved right through it.